I'd like to call the Monday, January 10th, 2022 Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to Order. If you could all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you and welcome, welcome everybody this evening and those watching at home. If we can please have a roll call.
Commissioners Gradoff.
Present.
Right, Banks.
Present.
Peel.
Present.
Veal.
Present.
Roar.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Stokemberry.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
Honeycutt.
Present.
Chairman Sanderson.
Present.
Alright, tonight's agenda consists of Item 1A, the Minutes from December 13th Planning Commission Meeting and the final plat for Derrick James Estates. Item 2, Conditional Use Permit for Alternative Development Standards for Advanced America. Items 3 and 4 is a rezoning and development, uh, general development plan for Blue Springs Aquatic Center, and this has been requested to be continued. Items 5, 6, and 7, rezoning PD Concept Plan and Preliminary Plat for White Oak Mixed Use. Item 8, Master Sign Plan for First Watch. Item 9 and 10, Preliminary and Final Plat for Copper Leaf Village Shopping Center. Item 11 is Other Business, and Item 12 is a German. At this time, I entertain a motion on the consent agenda for approval of the December 13th, 2021 Meeting Minutes and approval of the final plat for Derrick James Estates.
So moved.
Have a motion from Commissioner Honeycutt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Banks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carries. Now open the public hearing for Gen. Item 2, CUP 1221-8074 for Advanced America, and I would ask for exhibits from our City Attorney, Jackie Summer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments. 2 applicant plans with attachments. 3 affidavit publication in the examiner on December 23, 2021. 4 185-foot notification map. 5 names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6 copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7 Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Alright, thank you. And now ask for staff's presentation. Mr. McGee?
Thank you Chair, Commissioners. Before you this evening is a request for a conditional use permit with alternative development standards for the relocation of a short-term loan service business, Advanced America, from 802 Southwest 40 Highway to 792 Southwest 40 Highway in the Sunset Plaza Shopping Center. The property is owned GB PUD, General Business Plan Unit Development, which allows for the relocation with the approval of a conditional use permit. Staff reviewed the request for the conditional use permit under the short-term loan service review criteria for those standards to accommodate the relocation. Based on the review criteria, the CUP did not meet 2 other criterias. To accommodate the relocation of a loan service, 2 alternative develops, development standards are needed. The first being the proposed plan does not meet the 2,500 feet requirement from any other short-term loan service or gem dealer. The 2 businesses within the 200 and 2,500 feet relo, um, of the relocation are the Title Max Title Security Loans, which approximately 660 feet, and a Patriot Pawn and Guns, which is approximately 1,400 feet. The second requirement not met is the requirement that not more than 1 conditional use permit for short-term loan service shall be issued per 12,000 persons that make up the population of the city of Blue Springs. The city's most recent population is 58,603. There may be 4 short-term loan service, service business permitted within the city limits. The city currently has 7 licensed short-term loan service businesses. As all existing, existing licensed business predate the city's establishment of the special use standards in August 2007, none of them have a conditional use permit. Although the city's currently exceeds the number of licensed businesses, the request does not increase the number of short-term loan services as it is relocation of an existing business. Relocating the Advanced America from 802 Southwest 40 Highway to 792 Southwest 40 Highway in the Sunset Plaza Shopping Center will allow the pad site on 40 Highway to be redeveloped. Based on the review criteria for both the alternative development standards for the conditional use permit review, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit review with the alternative development standards as the relocation does not result in an increase in the number of short-term loan services and allows the pad site along 40 Highway frontage to be redeveloped. I stand for any questions.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for staff by the Commissioners? See none, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak? He could be sworn in and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Trip Ross.
If he could do it in the mic, yeah.
Trip Ross, 4615 West 88th Street, Prairie Village, Kansas. So, good evening, Playing Commissioner, staff. Thanks for having me here. Happy to discuss the final phase of our redevelopment of Sunset Plaza, the relocation of this conditional use permit.
Okay.
I believe our tenant may have a representative here outside.
Alright, any, any questions for the applicant by the Commissioners? Okay, see none, thanks. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this project? Any further discussion by the Commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Graham.
Go on record, I'll be voting no, but since it does not meet the distance requirements, because we've had similar situations in the past and they were turned down for that reason, so.
Okay, understood. Any other discussion by the Commissioners?
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I as well with the same reason.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Phillips?
Counter to that, I will be voting yes. The distance requirement doesn't concern me because it is a relocation and the existing business is actually closer to those conflicting businesses than the relocated, so we're actually increasing the distance, the separation, so.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion by the Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banks?
Excuse me. I'm with Commissioner Billups as to, my concerns are not that the number, because it's just relocating from one location to another.
Okay.
Not the distance.
Any other comments by Commissioners? Okay, now I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion on the conditional use permit.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move the conditional use permit, CUP 1221-8074 for Advanced America, be approved with the 2 conditions as submitted by staff.
Okay, have a motion from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Gradoff. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioners Gradoff.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Peel.
Nay.
Veal.
Aye.
Roar.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Stokemberry.
Aye.
Graham.
No.
Honeycutt.
No.
Chairman Sanderson.
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't go. Six to four.
Six to four, carries. Yep, so that motion carried with 2 staff conditions. This will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their Tuesday, January 18th meeting at 6:00 PM. Okay, Items 3 and 4, the applicant has requested to continue this public hearing for Items, for Items 3 and 4, and I'll ask for a motion to continue rezoning RZ 1221-8078 and General Development Plan, GDP 1221-8081 to the Monday, January 24th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion for Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries, and those items will be continued to the Planning Commission Meeting on Monday, January 24th, 2022. Now open the public hearing for Agenda, Agenda Items 4 and 5, rezoning RZ 2, 1221-8083 and Plan Development Concept Plan, PDC 1221-8084 for White Oak Mixed Use. We'll also hear Preliminary Plat, PP 1221-8085 with the staff presentation. I would ask for exhibits from our City Attorney, Jackie Summer.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record for RZ-12-21-8083. Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments. 2 applicant plans with attachments. 3 affidavit of publication in the examiner on December 23, 2021. 4 185-foot notification map. 5 names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6 copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7 Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. And for PDC-12-21-8084, I offer the following exhibits into the record. 1 staff report with attachments. 2 applicant plans with attachments. 3 affidavit of publication in the examiner on December 23, 2021. 4 185-foot notification map. 5 names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6 copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7 Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Alright, thank you. At this time, I'd ask for staff presentation. Mr. Wright?
Alright, thank you Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before this evening, a request for a rezoning, a PD Concept Plan and a Preliminary Plat for White Oak Mixed Juice, which is a proposed office and multifamily development of the, redevelopment of the White Oak Professionals Buildings, which is at the southeast corner of Southwest Luttrell and Southwest Sunset Avenue. The current property includes 3 lots on approximately, approximately 3.41 acres and is owned GB General Business. The first request is to rezone the subject property from GB General Business to PD Mixed Juice, which is a planned development. This is the first rezoning request under the new plan development standards that were approved in July 2021. The 2014 Comprehensive Plan included the subject property as part of a distinct destination, which included areas to the north and east surrounding the highways 7 and 40 intersection. Distinct destinations are defined as a mix of larger scale and regionally significant land uses that are unique within the community and the region. The C1 area plan does, classifies this property as high-density residential, which are areas of predominantly multifamily buildings that are primarily, primarily located in corridors or at transition areas between neighborhoods and centers or corridors. The intent of the PD zoning district is to encourage unique and high-quality neighborhoods, commercial or mixed-use developments through an integrated development plan that provides flexibility to the standard zoning district regulations. Through the PD zoning, the applicant is requesting to allow any land uses permitted by right or as part of a PD in the multifamily zoning districts, neighborhood business, and service office zoning districts. The 2nd and 3rd requests are for a PD Concept Plan and Preliminary Plat covering the entire 3.41 acre property as, as part of a 1 lot redevelopment. Proposed development includes 102 apartment units and 10,000 square feet of office space or commercial space within 3 buildings. The north building, which is located on the left of the site plan, will include the 10,000 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor with 2 floors of apartments above totaling 24 units. The center and southern building, each will have 39 apartments across 3 floors. The net density for the site is 29.9 units per acre. As part of the PD, the commercial space may include a mix of office, service, and retail uses. The most common land uses are included on the staff report on, on page 8. Access to the site will consolidate from the current 5 points of access along Luttrell to 3 points of access. The northern access will serve the north building, and the center and south access will create a loop drive that is to the rear of the 2 apartment buildings to the center and south of the property. 5-foot sidewalks are required along both Luttrell and Sunset Avenue as part of the redevelopment. Through the PD zoning and concept plan, the site is being reviewed under the mixed-juice building type, as well as the neighborhood business zoning district standards for buffering, landscaping, and outdoor lighting. The site meets all but 2 requirements of the mixed-juice building type. The first modification is to waive the max, the maximum 10-foot front setback to allow all 3 buildings to be located further than 10 feet from Southwest Luttrell Road. The second modification is to allow the building design to be reviewed under the residential design standards instead of the non-residential design standards. The applicant has provided a scheduled C parking memo to determine the minimum parking standards for the site. With the shared parking and bike parking reductions, there are 179 spaces proposed. The shared parking is based on the site being used for both residential units and retail service spaces, which have different parking demand peak times. Based on the parking memo, the peak parking demand will be for 183 spaces on weekends and evenings, when 90% of spaces are needed for both the apartments and the commercial spaces. As each building has provided exterior bike parking, a further reduction in 4 spaces is warranted, as it is assumed that some parking demand will be made, will be met from bike trips instead of vehicle trips. This reduction results in the 179 spaces that are being provided for the site. In addition to the previously mentioned modifications to the mixed-juice building type, there are 3 other modifications proposed for the development. The first is to reduce the internal sidewalk for sidewalks abutting head-on parking from 8 feet to 6 feet. That applies just to the north building here. The second is to adjust the minimum 10-foot terrace frontage depth to 7 feet, which will match the required landscape buffer, buffer depth, which is 7 feet along Luttrell, and then 7 feet along Sunset. And then the final, related to that, is a 1-foot drive aisle encroachment for the parking, the north parking area here, which encroaches into that 7-foot buffer by a foot. And then lastly is this 1 parking space here at the far northwest corner, which is a full encroachment into that setback or buffer, but that is due to the dedicate, additional dedication of right-of-way here at the street corner. The last modification is a waiver for the height for wall-mounted lighting for the buildings, which is capped at 30 feet above grade for neighborhood business zoning. As the buildings are proposed to be up to 45 feet tall, this would prohibit outdoor lighting on the 3rd story of the building. Staff believes that these modifications are enhancements, enhance the development by increasing the building setbacks from Luttrell Road to provide more green space and landscaping between the street and building walls and entrances, as well as enhanced architectural design standards, as well as landscaping and buffering that is a consistent depth along the entire perimeter of the site. The, the site does include again 3 buildings, each 3 stories. The north building is a full 3 stories above grade, whereas the corner and south buildings are 2-story at street level along Luttrell and 3-story on the backside as the, the lower level is tucked into the site. Building design provides four-sided architecture with a mix of building projections, entrance features, windows and variations in massing and roof lines. Materials include masonry along ground floor and 2nd floor street level, with the remainder being a mix of cement board siding and paneling in a variety of colors for visual interest. The building does take into, the building design does take into consideration both the existing site and the surrounding properties, particularly the center and south buildings, which will have the appearance of a 2-story building along Luttrell for a more sensitive transition to the 2-story apartments to the south, as well as the single and 2-story, single-family homes to the west. Landscape buffers and terrace frontage requirements are provided in the staff report with preliminary plant unit counts. A conceptual site plan, which is on the screen, has been provided that does include the general layout of landscaping and buffering. These landscaping requirements will be reviewed in greater detail through the PD Final Plan and Site Plan Design Review Process. Staff did review the rezoning criteria under the 9 review criteria that are included in the staff report and finds that the request is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the area plan for the property. The proposed zoning and redevelopment of the site with the PD zoning is appropriate for a mixed-juice site. Approval of the application could encourage the redevelopment of other vacant or underutilized properties in the area and could set a positive precedent of, of greater interest in mixed-juice developments, a development type that has become more common in other suburban communities but has yet to be considered in Blue Springs. Denial of the application could result in the existing development staying as is for the time being and could discourage redevelopment of the property or similar properties in the area with other mixed-juice or multifamily development. Since the properties were first developed in the 1980s, significant changes have occurred adjacent to the property, including the complete redevelopment of White Oak Plaza into White Oak Marketplace. This is one of the last remaining properties within the 7 and 40 Highway distinct, distinct destination area that has not been redeveloped over the past decade. Based on this review criteria, staff recommends approval of the rezoning of the site to PD Mixed Juice. Staff reviewed the PD Concept Plan under the 7 review criteria included in the staff report and finds that the development is in, is compatible with the area and will not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area, based on both the sensitive design of the site and buildings, as well as the additional reinvestment that is likely to have a positive impact on the surrounding area. The concept plan meets 5 goals and multiple targets within the comprehensive plan. The plan integrates housing choices into neighborhoods and meets all 3 targets of that goal by adding a unique housing type, adding housing near potential transit or park-and-ride locations, and converting obsolete commercial properties to residential uses. White Oak Plaza was at one time a park-and-ride location, and the comprehensive plan still designates that as a location that may still be viable for park-and-ride location in the future. The plan helps to strengthen the urban tree canopy with new streetscaping and landscaping, including street trees beyond what currently exists. Plan promotes development that reinforces the importance of the public realm, in this case, the public street, by providing internal circulation and connectivity within the development. Plan also improves transportation choice for local trips, including all 3 targets of the goal by improving pedestrian connectivity with sidewalk extensions, increasing biking and walking for local trips, and reducing household transportation costs and vehicle miles traveled. Although that last target is difficult to measure in advance, the plan is located in an area where that is feasible. Finally, the plan creates a transit-ready destination, as it is adding additional residential units within a half-mile of a transit or park-and-ride location. The requested modifications under the PD standards are warranted and are generally minor and are enhancements for the development. The modifications are unique to the site based on the building type and location. The mixed-juice building type has completely urban standards and does not take into account the suburban context of the site, whereas the Neighborhood Business Zoning District standards are completely suburban in character and do not take into account a more urban-style building or site development. These modifications are needed to suburbanize the mixed-juice building type while urbanizing the Neighborhood Business Zoning District. Plan meets, reflects generally accepted and sound planning and urban design principles, specifically those outlined in the comprehensive plan. And based on this, this review criteria, staff does recommend approval of the concept plan with 2 staff conditions. And staff also finds that all preliminary plat requirements have been met and therefore recommends approval of the preliminary plat with 7 conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for staff by the Commissioners?
Chair.
Commissioner Peel?
I'll yield to Mr. Phillips.
Okay.
I just have, I just have a simple question. What is the street classification for, for Luttrell? Is it a collector's street?
Luttrell is classified as a minor collector's street. Sunset is a local street.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peel, or, go ahead.
Chair, Mr. Wright, has there been any light, lighting spillover since the study, since these lights are going to be up on the 3rd level?
Lighting is, will be looked at in more detail with the final plan. We do require a photometric plan, and they would still be, regardless of the height of the lighting, they would still be required to make sure that they meet the maximum spillover requirement at the property line.
Okay, also, secondary question on the parking lot at the, I guess, where the buffer's going to be. There's a 9-foot drop down to the parking, the covered parking that's for the senior living project. Is there any kind of buffer other than plant buffer? Is there any kind of fence or wall or anything like that that's proposed?
They would only be required, the, the 7-foot landscape buffer, in this case.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Gradoff, did you have a question?
Yes, has there been a traffic study done? And when you mentioned park-and-ride, is that a dedication to rerouting public transportation in that area?
I'll let our Assistant Public Works Director respond to the question on the traffic study, and in terms of the, of the park-and-ride location, that is, that was operated by the Kansas City Transit Authority. That, currently, they do not have any installation at that location.
Is that, is that something that may be discussed in the future, or is that contingent of on how they go?
I, I think it is, it would be based on if they determine that there's additional demand within close proximity of that stop, if they were to bring that back.
So in terms of the traffic impact study, yes, there was a study performed for this site. And I do not believe there are any additional improvements to the existing roadway network that were warranted as a result of that study.
Thank you. Commissioner Honeycutt?
Um, where in this plan is the trash area? So we're like a trash dumpster for all of these units?
They have provided a trash enclosure here, just south of the north building, and then there's an additional one here at the southeast corner of the site. So there are 2 enclosures for the development.
So those are going to be, have walls around them to where?
Yes, they are, they are required to be fully screened on 3 sides with gates on the front.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff by the Commissioners? Alright, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak? So you need to be sworn in and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Tim Homberg with NSPJ Architects, 3515 West 75th Street in Prairie Village, Kansas. Thank you Chair and Tending Commissioner, especially Matt, for the presentation here this evening. We really feel that Matt gave a really comprehensive review of the project with our renderings and stuff, so we're just kind of available for any questions by the Commission.
Alright, very good. Any questions for the applicant by the Commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
These apartments will be open to anyone, is that right, Mr.?
Probably the people that qualify for the rents that are going to be asked for the apartments are going to be considered a Class A apartment, so there's going to be commensurate rents with a Class A development.
Okay, alright, thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Honeycutt?
What is the rent range and what are the size of the apartments?
The range, you know, typically studios are like 650, you know, 1 bedrooms are 750, 2 bedrooms are 950 or 1,000. We're still kind of working through a little bit of the particulars on that. Ranges that we've talked about with the developer for rents are probably going to be somewhere between 1,000 to 1,800 a month.
And how mu, what size bedrooms are the, are they all from studio to 3-bedroom or 2-bedroom?
The studio, the unit mix, we don't, you know, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. Audrey, do we have a unit mix assigned yet?
Right now, as, as the current development plan stands, we have about 12% studios, 50% 1-bedrooms, 22% 2-bedrooms, and then 70%, 17% 2-bedroom dens. And those are historic averages for market rate apartments to kind of capture the ebb and flow of renters. One season, 2-bedrooms will be really popular, and then the next season, 1-bedrooms or studios will be. So it's positioned to be very flexible to the market.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the Commissioners for the applicant?
Can you tell us how the maintenance is maintained?
The applicant, the owner is Tyler Salee. He's here tonight. Most likely, they'll have either a maintenance group and/or do the maintenance themselves. The exteriors are generally low-maintenance exteriors. We use cementuus, and you kind of explained on the elevations, a lot of very durable exterior maintenance, so there's not going to be, you know, generally a lot of upkeep to them.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Alright, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in opposition? And I did have one speaker form from an Elizabeth Carver.
Yep.
If he could please come forward. He could be sworn in and state your name and address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Carver, and I'm located at 1001 Southwest Sunset Street, Blue Springs. And I just have a couple of questions for the, whoever's designing it. The traffic. The traffic, since we do have apartments already and with Price Chopper and the senior, there's been a lot more traffic, and the speed seems to not be monitored for 25. It's pretty fast, the trucks and the trash trucks and everything that goes up and down. So that's one question, is what are we going to do about that, the speed? And how are we going to take care of the traffic that's already there? I noticed, listening to them, they said they were going to put bushes or some kind of design 10 feet in.
The landscape buffer, yeah.
Landscape. When I requested to have a fence put in around my front property due to the fact that people try to run around cars that are stopped at the stop sign there at Luttrell and Sunset, and there's been times that people go around and have gone through my yard and have almost taken out a tree or my, myself, walking my dogs. So I asked to have a fence put in, and they want me to go in 13 feet. That's clear up to my front porch, so, and I have bushes that go up half through my yard on Luttrell that's only eight feet in. So I'm kind of concerned about that, the more traffic. The, in looking at the property that they're talking about, there's what, three buildings, I think? Are they going to take those down and rebuild, or is that where the apartments are going to add on? Because some of the people that live in the apartments already there are some of our young speeders. Couple of times, we've been walking and they come flying by, and then they go into the gated. So that's a lot of my concern, is the traffic, the lighting, and that.
Okay. Yeah. Any, any questions for this witness by the commissioners? Any questions for this witness by the commissioners? All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? I don't know if the, if the applicant would like to address any of those items. I think some of those you may have mentioned, but if you, you don't have to, but, okay. Okay. Any other further discussion by the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Cradoff. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Commissioner Cradoff, go ahead.
I have a question for staff about these traffic studies. You know, some of our meetings, we, we hear some, quite, quite a few residents express their concerns about speeding and traffic and so forth. When we have these discussions, is there any further discussion about future usage of developments and how we can better handle these types of situations in the neighborhoods? Just out of curiosity, because she brings a valid point, and we appreciate you coming to us and talking about that. Is there ever discussions about that, how we can better that in our neighborhoods in any way?
Well, I think it wouldn't necessarily be the responsibility of the applicant's traffic impact study to generally, certainly not enforce any speed concerns that are current and existing. The traffic impact studies evaluate the impact that a new development will have on the city's infrastructure. So sometimes additional lanes may be warranted, turn lanes or just capacity lanes. That's the type of thing that we're looking at. So not so much in enforcement of existing policy. I feel like that would fall back to the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Peel?
Yes, thank you, Chair. My concern on this project, I like the project, but I think it's in the wrong place. The reason I say that is because since there's no play area for children, and there'll be children in these apartments, is that they will encroach on the property of the senior living project that's behind it. There's no wall to block them off from encroaching on the property, and not only that, but the people that are in the south buildings will probably use the encroachment to get to Price Chopper. I think there's going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic through there, and for seniors that are in that area and driving, there may be a safety issue because of pedestrians. So that's my concern, and I'll probably be voting no for the project. But thank you.
Any other discussion by, or comments by the commissioners?
Commissioner Banks. I'm torn with the project because the buildings that are there are, been there a long, since I've lived in the town. And the way they've got these designed is a really excellent way of coming across with apartments. My, and I am concerned, just as the Lux apartments, with kids playing with no place to play.
Can you speak into the microphone? We can't hear you.
Oh. It's, I'm sorry, it wasn't on. That'll do it. That'll do it.
Good now.
Usually you can hear me without it, but I, so I'm just kind of concerned about it, even though I want to approve it, I have concerns about the kids, and I always do when it comes to apartments on a busy street so close to 42. But yet, I like the layout, and it being only, look, two-story across from the other houses. So I don't know, probably just when it comes up. So I'm sorry. I just wanted to.
Any other comments or discussion by the commissioners?
I have a question. Going back to the speed thing, so something that I've been wanting to ask about multiple projects is we have residents continuously come to us and they're concerned about the speed. So what is, what are the options with the city with putting speed bumps on some of these roads? That we have speed issues. I know, you know, our sister city, Lee Summit, does a lot of those, is driving through the city. What are, you know, what's your input on, on doing that kind of thing here in Blue Springs?
We don't do speed bumps on public streets for a number of reasons, but, you know, especially in light of the current climate weather, when you put a plow down on a asphalt road and then you drive through and hit that speed bump at speed, it generally tends to pop it off. It also can have implications to the, the water flow. Public streets, just, we don't, we don't do speed bumps. Private developments, they do, there are some existing speed bumps in Blue Springs, but none on private streets, or none on public streets.
All right. Thank you.
I would just like to make the comment that if there's a problem with speeders in your neighborhood, please contact the police department, and they'll, they'll respond to you.
We have.
Keep, keep contacting them.
Well, can I speak?
Yeah, so we've heard, so we've heard the, we've heard the, your comments on the, in opposition.
So speeding is not one of the criteria that we're looking at tonight.
It's got to do with the kids. I'm sorry, but I didn't, it's got to do with the kids. McDonald's is across the street.
Sorry.
The kids from the apartments.
She's got to come to the mic, please, if you're going to let her talk.
I think we've, I think we've heard, yeah, we definitely have the, a couple of comments from the commissioners about the speed, and I've heard the concern.
So you're not, you're not open to the rest of the opposition about it, and the children? She brought up the children, that's why I'm bringing up about the children.
So typically, so typically, yeah, we've heard, I am definitely open to the comments, and we've.
Can I come back up and speak about the children?
We can, we can definitely, what I typically say is, if we've heard, if we've heard the concern, we try not to repeat the same concern.
I'm a resident. I live on the corner. And I have, I retired, and I have seen what has happened with the kids.
Okay, you're not standing at the podium, so we have a reporter who's taking down everything that you say. Please keep your comments.
I will.
You have an argument.
Okay. Regarding the children, since there are apartments going down Sunset Street, there are a lot of families that aren't working, so they walk their children to McDonald's, and there is a stop sign at Luttrell and Sunset, and the speed limit is 25. Nobody goes 25 miles an hour. They go quite fast. These little kids try to cross the street, and they can't. There's been a few times I've gone out there to help them. So I think something has to be done if they're going to add businesses and more apartments. There has to be something done about the speed limit, about the children, because that's our concern as well, because someone's going to get hit. And that corner is quite busy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there further additional comments about opposition? So if you're going to come forward, you got to be sworn in and state your name and address, please.
I'm Cecil Hale at 1217 Southwest Luttrell. Not really in so much as opposition, just general question. The utilities for this development, would it cause any shut-off for the, was that the western side of Luttrell?
I would say that that is a, I mean, I can address that from staff perspective. That's a construction timing and construction phasing and operational, you know, issue that would happen much further down the road. But typically, no, there would not be any kind of utility shut-offs, and if they do happen, they're usually pretty brief at them. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, typically, the only thing that you would be impacted by would be a water shutdown, and that's generally done within a couple of hours on one day.
Okay. And then you mentioned that it was for Class A renters. Forgive my naivety, what's a Class A renter for these apartments?
You want to answer that, or?
I might have the applicant come back up and respond to that.
Sure. Thank you for that. It's not really necessarily the depiction of a Class A renter, it's the depiction of the type of facility. We're building a Class A facility, and then subsequently, the same level of renters apply, just like we talked about earlier. The level of rents will kind of, you know, mesh with the level of facility that we're providing.
Any other further discussion by the commissioners?
Chair.
Commissioner Cradoff.
This question for staff, that intersection, Luttrell and Sunset, is a busy intersection as right now. If a turning lane was warranted, is there room for a turning lane ever, or is not room? Also, visibility, that corner of McDonald's, their visibility is not good on that corner either.
Yeah, the, it was part of the study was turn lane evaluations, and at these locations, which Luttrell and Sunset was one that was targeted, it was not evaluated, or it was not warranted, a turn lane. Whether or not there's sufficient right-of-way, I, I'm not certain at this time, so.
Any other questions or discussion by commissioners?
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question, pertaining to, I guess, on the traffic part? With more residents here, having to come, coming in and out and stopping, would that slow down the traffic on Luttrell? Because people have to stop now, because they're, right now, the businesses are there, and I go up and down that street, and there's nobody there. So that's probably why they're speeding it down. But if there's people coming in and out, will that slow down the traffic so that maybe it would be safer? Because the people, residents will be coming in and out?
I mean, I'd, I'd have to speculate on that. What I can say is I know that there are five entrances currently into the existing development. This new proposal includes a reduction down to three entrances, so I think that would be a, an improvement to the traffic flow. You've got fewer locations on Luttrell where, where there's potential conflicts with pedestrians and vehicles entering the development.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions by commissioners? Commissioner Cradoff.
I have a question for the applicant. Do you have any notifications that you give to your residents who may have children that stay at your facilities in terms of what they're talking about, the safety and so forth for children playing or being in the area?
There's not, generally, it's up to the management company, and so obviously, the management company will be very much in tune to the number of children that are at the development. You know, we're just kind of speculating right now if there's going to be a certain percentage or not of children in this development. Historically, on our multifamily Class A, we don't generally see a high percentage, regardless of where it's located in the city, for high number of children in the developments of this sort, of for rent apartments. So I would say that it was going to be, if it does become a concern, obviously, the management company would come through and, you know, make sure and notice that the residents do know of, you know, any kind of issues that could be perceived in the area with traffic.
So that, that would be something that you would monitor, take a look at?
I think, I think, you know, obviously, as the management company oversees, you know, the well-being of their, their residents, then if that becomes a concern, they would probably alert them to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
I'd like to recall Mr. Homberg again, if I may, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Mr. Salee, if you could please be sworn in and state your name and address, please.
Tyler Salee with Salee Development, PO Box 6437, Lee Summit, Missouri, 64064. I just want to comment real quickly. Thank you guys for all the comments and the time tonight on the, the amount of kids and young children in a, in a facility like this. I can speak on another facility that we have that's similar to this, a little bit larger in size in a sister neighborhood, and of our total residents, we've got about 10% that have children that are in the elementary age, or that are in elementary school or younger. So if you think about a project like this, where there's 100 and, 102 units total, we're speculating that about 10 of those households will have families that have elementary-age students, the rest of them will not. So that's, you know, we've tried to, we've tried to include an amenity package that's in the center of the community. It's got the swimming pool, some outdoor area to play. You know, we hope that, that attracts a lot of the young families, young kids, you know, give them a place to go. It doesn't help on a day like today, obviously, but for a handful of the months, hopefully we have a place for them to congregate, for people to come together. Obviously, it's easy to get to. It's very well-protected, you know, it's screened on, on three sides. But, but anyways, I just want to speak, we do have experience from other projects that are similar to this on the amount of young kids, elementary age, especially and younger, and, and what we expect, we expect something similar in this project as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to call Ms. Ron.
Yes.
Mr. Homberg, would you consider changing this into an age-specific, like 55 and over?
That's up to the developer's discretion. In our experience with this type of multifamily facility, by not putting an age restriction on it, actually creates a better community. In a lot of our developments, the renters' age, you know, are from 18 to 82. And what that does, and what we found, is a lot of the advanced-age renters, they like the youthful vigor of the community. They don't feel like they, you know, most of the renters, they like to have that varying age of class of renter. You know, if they have a few families like Taylor, Tyler talked about, that's great because that, they get that interaction with a bunch of different generational age people, and that actually attracts them to a facility like this, even up to the age of 82.
Okay. Another question is, the, Mr. Salee mentioned the, the elementary students that might be there, is what about older students, high school, middle school, things like that? Is there a percentage of what would be in these apartments at that point?
It's just speculation right now, depends on who decides to rent.
Okay. I figured if they had some numbers on the current, one current place, that that would carry over to the next.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Any final comments, questions from the commissioners? Close public hearing and entertain a motion for the rezoning.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Phillips.
I would move for approval of the rezoning, RZ 12218083.
I have a motion from Commissioner Phillips. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Cradoff, and this will be a roll-call vote.
Commissioners Banks.
Aye.
Peel.
Nay.
Veal.
Aye.
Roar.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Stokkenberry.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Honecker.
Aye.
Cradoff.
Aye.
And Chairman Sanderson.
Aye.
Motion carries with 9 to 1.
Okay. So that motion was carried to be Okay, so that motion was carried, to be recommended and heard by the City Council through Tuesday, January 18th, meeting at 6:00 P.M. Now entertain a motion for the P.D. concept plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Billups.
I would also move for approval of the PDC 12218084 with the two staff conditions.
I have a motion from Commissioner Billups, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cradoff, and this will also be a roll-call vote.
Commissioner Peel.
Nay.
Veal.
Aye.
Roar.
Aye.
Billups.
Aye.
Stokkenberry.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Honeycutt.
Aye.
Cradoff.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
And Chairman Sanderson.
Aye.
Motion carries, nine to one.
So this item will also be recommended and heard at City Council through Tuesday, January 18th, meeting at 6:00 P.M. And finally, I'd ask for a motion on the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Billups.
Finally, I'll move for approval of preliminary plat, PP 12218085 with the seven staff conditions.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Billups, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So that motion also carried with seven staff conditions. All right, next item on the agenda will be item eight, master alternative sign plan for First Watch at White Oak Marketplace, and I would ask for staff's presentation, Ms. Bright.
Before you this evening is a request for an amendment to an existing master sign plan for the installation of three new building-mounted signs for First Watch at 1077 Southwest 7 Highway. The property is generally located at the southwest corner of Southwest 7 Highway and Southwest Consumer. It is zone general business, planned unit development, and includes approximately 0.48 acres. The proposal includes removing the existing building-mounted signage and replacing them with larger signs that are in compliance with the sign code. With the expansion of the proposed signs, the building shell will have 868 square feet of signage around the entire facade. The only thing planning commission will be voting on tonight is the proposed building-mounted signs for First Watch, since all the other signage has been previously approved with the master sign plan. The wall signs are about 110 square feet each, and the sign code states that building-mounted signage cannot exceed 10% of the facade. All proposed signage for First Watch is in compliance and does not exceed 10%, as shown in the table in the staff report. Staff supports the request, since the applicant is wanting to bring their signage into compliance with the current code, and all the allowed signage on each building facade will still be under 10%. Staff reviewed the applications and found that there are no requested deviations from the code. Staff recommends approval of the master sign plan amendment with one condition, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, any questions for staff, other commissioners? See none, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak? Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Lee Hicks with First Watch Restaurants, 8725 Pendry Place, Bradenton, Florida. Yes, I flew here today, so I'm loving your weather. We're just very thrilled that we opened up this restaurant in 2018, and we recently learned that the sign code had changed after we opened. And so with this new sign code, we're wanting to upgrade our signage to bring it into compliance with the current code and also look more proportional to the building that it's on. It'll look more thoughtful and intentional rather than an afterthought. So I'm here for any questions.
Any question for the applicant by the commissioners?
Chair.
Commissioner Roar.
I just want to thank First Watch for actually doing this in a professional way. Based off signage here in Blue Springs, we have a lot of them that, this is a perfect example that someone could have just come along, put something up outside for breakfast, lunch, and all like that. So I think you're going the right way.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant by the commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by the commissioners? All right, I would entertain a motion for the master alternative sign plan.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Banks.
I really like the new sign, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the master alternative sign plan for White Oak Marketplace First Watch, ASP-12-21-8072, with one condition.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Banks and a second from Commissioner Cradoff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carried with the one staff condition. Next items on the agenda are items nine and 10, preliminary plat, or preliminary and final plats for Copper Leaf Shopping Center replat. And I would ask for the staff presentation by Ms. Bright.
The last request on the agenda is a request for approval of a preliminary and final plat for Copper Leaf Shopping Center, a proposed two-lot commercial subdivision. The applicant is requesting to replat the existing one-lot subdivision to create a second lot, essentially to break Popeyes off so that it may be sold separately. Proposed lot 2A covers approximately 0.463 acres and is currently zoned G.B. It is located north of Northwest R.D.M.I.S. Road and west of 7 Highway. If both applications are approved, no other applications are anticipated. Since no new development is being proposed with this plat, staff is requesting that the general development plan be waived for the replat. The proposed lot and existing building meet the requirements as a pad-site building. Setbacks have been shown on the preliminary plat to ensure lot 2A is in compliance with current building standards. Access easements have been granted on the final plat over all access points, since the proposed lot 2A does not have any direct access to 7 Highway or adjacent streets. No new construction is being proposed, and no sidewalk improvements are required at this time. As denoted in the staff report, any future redevelopment projects will be responsible for filling in missing sections of sidewalk. Staff has reviewed the request and finds that the preliminary and final plats are in compliance with the UDC requirements. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary and final plat with one condition each, and I'm here for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff by the commissioners? See none, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak? Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Dustin Burn with R.I.C., we're at 1815 McGee Street, Kansas City, Missouri. Thanks to staff, we don't have any issues with the conditions as presented, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant by the commissioners? See none, thank you. Any further discussion by the commissioners? All right, then I entertain a motion for the preliminary plat.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that preliminary plat, PP 12218088, for Copper Leaf Shopping Center replat, be approved with one condition, as approved by staff.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Peel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carried with the one staff condition, and I would now entertain a motion on the final plat.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move the final plat, PF 11218089. I think that might be wrong, is that, did I cover you down the wrong number? That's right. Okay, for a Copper Leaf Shopping Center replat, with one condition, be approved as submitted by staff.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Peel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carried with the one staff condition. This item will be recommended and heard by the City Council through Tuesday, January 18th, meeting at 6:00 P.M. On to other business, Mr. Wright.
Yes, we will have a meeting on Monday, January 24th. The Aquatic Center was continued this evening to that agenda, and we will have some additional items to bring forward that evening as well. And then the last item on the agenda under other business is just a quick review of the monthly development report for December. For the building permit activity, we did issue 22 single-family home permits in December with the year-to-date of 177, which would be the final total for 2021. Overall, we issued 272 dwelling unit permits in 2021, which was about half of what we did in 2020. There still are some larger projects, such as the Edison at Blue Springs, which we hope will be issued soon, which will add 198 units. And then there's also several single-family subdivisions where there are completing infrastructure work, so we should be able to issue quite a few more permits in the spring as those improvements wrap up. Year-to-date, final permits for 2021, total building permits was 1,369, which was just short of the record in 2020 at 1,425. And then total construction costs, however, were, despite the decrease in building permits, total construction costs and square footage were much higher than 2020, almost $30 million more in construction costs in 2021. A lot of that was due to the larger industrial projects, as well as some of the school projects that were permitted this year. Code enforcement activity, there were 131 new cases open in December. Majority, 25 of those were nuisance inspection, and 25 were trash prohibitive, which are frequently on the top three list. And then for planning activity, there were a couple of projects the Planning Commission reviewed that went on to council that were approved, including the Chapman Ridge Phase 2 project down on Culver Road, as well as Eagles Ridge Estates 5th plat. That went to Planning Commission in September. It was finally approved by the council in December. And then the Blue Springs High School project was approved by the City Council. City Council did deny the Gate Center billboard, and then they also approved the Con Carpet project. For administrative site plans, we did approve one in December, and that was for Tacos for Life, which is a new fast-food restaurant with drive-through that is being developed on the former Denny's location at I-70 and 7 Highway. And then for sign permits, the month of December, we issued 21. Year-to-date, we had an increase of five permits over 2020. Any questions on the development report?
See none, any other staff business?
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I'd like to ask council if I might amend my original vote on the final plat for Derrick James Estate.
You can't amend it at this point.
Okay.
I mean, vote's already been taken.
Since it was co-joined with the minutes. That's fine.
Yeah, you would have had to separate that out for a separate vote.
Okay. That's fine.
Do you want to have it reconsidered?
To separate it out?
You'd have to make a motion. You voted in favor of it, correct?
I voted in favor, and I was going to vote no, but that's okay. If I can't amend it, that's fine. All right, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay. I think. Yeah, Mr. M.
Yeah, I would just like to say that we have hired Karen Finora's replacement. We brought back Alia Kincaid, who was in the Community Development Department for a number of years as one of our business services reps in terms of permitting. And so she has a lot of experience with the Community Development Department, and we were lucky enough to be able to bring her back, and very excited for her to join our department and be able to help us out at these meetings moving forward. So just wanted to welcome Alia and thank Julia for stepping in to help out this evening from the City Clerk's office, really appreciate that. Take it as team effort, and we appreciate Julia, you being here tonight. Alia will be up there next week, or two weeks from now, so.
Welcome.
Any other, the commissioners, have any other business? And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good night.